Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Trenton City Council meeting of May eleventh, twenty twenty one. This is the council conference session to set the docket for Thursday's meeting. If you'd like to follow along, the items are listed at ecod three sixty dot com. Under the Agenda section, you'll have to go to the Trenton, the particular domain for the city of Trenton at ecod three sixty dot com. Under Agendas, you'll can find all of the meeting items, the documented agenda for tonight's meeting. If you could please stay muted throughout the meeting until such time as you are acknowledged by the council chairman or the chairman of the meeting for any relevant public portion provisions. Tonight's public portion will be listed to docket items only. Thank you very much. Please remain muted. If you're on a telephone, you can mute yourself by dialing star six. And you can unmute yourself as well by dialing star six. When the relevant time for public portion comes along, we will be reaching out to the members of the public to speak, and tonight we'll be on docket items only. If you wish to speak on any other topic, you can join us for Thursday's council meeting, at which point you have ten minutes to speak your mind on any particular subject. Thank you very much. Please remain muted throughout the meeting. We'll be beginning shortly.
I can hear someone's conversation. Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am.
It looks like council president is not going to be carrying the meeting tonight.
Yes, ma'am. She had a...
So, I guess we need to open the meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Would you like me to... I'm not sure if we have a quorum yet, ma'am.
You want to check?
Yes, ma'am. I see Mr. Rodriguez is here. I see that Mr. Michelle is here. I see that you are here. I do not see any other council members yet.
Ms. Bond said that she'll be about six o'clock.
But we still cannot get started without a quorum.
Mr. Collins, Councilman Harrison.
We now have a quorum, madam.
Okay. I will now call to order adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Law's nineteen seventy five, chapter two thirty one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the city clerk's office, and posted on the city of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely, have you arrived yet, sir? Mr. Harrison?
Present.
Mr. Michelle?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Vaughn is absent. Ms. McBride is absent. Council chair, Ms. Colwell? Yes, ma'am. Madam, I will now call the directors. Mr. Cruz?
Present. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Cherry?
I'm present. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Liston?
Present.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Bridges?
Sally Samuel, on behalf of the Board Department. Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am. Director Colby?
Present.
Good evening, ma'am. Chief Mazzio?
Present. Good evening, sir.
Director Delisle?
Present.
Good evening, sir. Director Lopez?
Good evening, I'm present.
Good evening, ma'am. Director Rana Terry?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Director Richardson?
Present. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, ma'am. Director Lavenberg?
Good evening, present.
Thank you. Good evening. Director Zelinski?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Madam, we have a quorum. The directors are present. We have a full agenda tonight. We do have an executive session. I don't know if you wanted to do that at the top or wait until the back end of the meeting. We also have a presentation by Mr. Delisle.
Yeah, I would wait till the end of the meeting for the executive session.
Yes, ma'am. That being said, would you like to proceed with Mr. Delisle's presentation?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle, I'm going to put up the items that you sent me on the screen, and when you are ready to move forward, you just let me know. But you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilwoman Colwell Wilson and members of council, members of the public. Just wanted to give a brief update on the status of the recreation and senior center improvements that, as you know, are being... The work is underway and ongoing. It's being funded with CDBG funds. We will have a couple of items before you tonight on the docket, and I wanted to just walk through them and show you some pictures of them for your consideration. So, the first project to talk about, just the Reading Center. Next, please. These are just some pictures of the before or before the work began. You can see there's a office space that needs to be improved, some floors, the bathrooms. Next, please. Kitchen facilities. Next, please. So, just a recap of the work that's being done. It's a total construction cost of the bid price was six hundred and fifty one thousand, six hundred dollars. It's estimated to be completed September of this year. You know, just summarizing, new first floor office space, gut renovation of the kitchenette, enlarging the restrooms, upgrades, some finishes in the conference room. We're adding an elevator so we have better use of an upper floor and access to, for the seniors. And then modifications is some work in the basement. At this point, demolition has been completed and the abatement work is done. We've installed concrete footings and rebar for the elevator shaft. The electrical and plumbing HVAC work is ongoing. Framing is ongoing. We've removed the subfloor. And currently, the general contractor is demobilized and they're waiting on the change orders to be approved before continuing with the work. That work has interrupted the contracted work. So, we have the next, please. Just want to show some of the change orders. And again, these are summarized in the resolutions that are before you for consideration tonight. This is the, just request number three is just how we keep track of them. Again, just a picture of the baseboard cover. It was pretty corroded and rusty. When they were doing other demolition work, just found that it was falling apart and needs to be replaced. Next, please. You can see in this picture at the bottom that the dirt, this is where the elevator will come down. And there was a conflict after demolition and getting into the project, discovered with some plumbing work in the foreground and also some building controls, electrical work in the, towards the middle top of the picture. These things need to be relocated to make room for the elevator installation. Next, please. This is at the upper floor. Hoist beam needs to be installed to come, to install the elevator. And this is something that was not included in the contract documents. So, it's something that we need to include at this time. And that's it for the Reading Center. Okay, have the next slide, please. The North Clinton Recreation Center. It pictured here. Next slide, please. This was a much larger project and renovation that's ongoing. It's seven hundred and fifty four thousand dollars was the base bid. Lot of facade improvements. You can see a rendering on the picture here. New aluminum glass storefront, concrete landings, new basement, new windows. An interior, all new fit out on the interior, new walls, renovation of the restrooms, laundry room, flooring and ceiling and lighting. So, pretty extensive renovation to this facility. The next slide, please. The demolition work has been completed. The abatement work has been completed. The roof electrical work has been completed. Rough framing and structural reinforcement are ongoing. And again, right now, we're at a bit of a standstill for pending the change orders that have interrupted the contracted work. Go to the next slide, please. So, here's some pictures before of the building. You can see the exterior and the top pictures. The bottom is the interior, the basement on the left and bathrooms on the right. Next slide, please. Again, interior pictures. Just want to note that there's, you know, walls, finished walls in all these locations. And that's be apparent in the next slide why the change orders are required. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, again, a couple more of the interior pre-existing conditions. You can see in the top right, a roof leak or staining from a roof leak. Okay, next slide, please. So, we found when they did the demolition of those interior walls that you saw there on the previous pictures, that the, there was a lot of structural issues with the, behind the framing, if you will. The terracotta block was really structurally deficient. And the, when they had to remove this, there was damage to the hot water baseboards, heaters as well that need to be replaced. There was damage there. Again, this is work, I'm sorry, damage that was not evident at the time of bidding because it was behind the wall. Next picture, please. Again, you can see the rotten joists, I'm sorry, studs and sill plate on the right-hand side and just the general condition of the wall behind, behind the framing. Next, please. Again, just some more pictures of the structural damage. All right, thank you. Next slide, please. The floor joists were rotten, again, after demolition, removing the flooring and the subfloor. And that work, that wood needs to be shored up, structural walls installed and fixing the floor joists. This is a picture in the basement. Next picture, please. A next slide, rather. You can see here in both these slides, the rotten, rotten wood, rotten beams that were exposed during the demolition activities. Next, please. Again, more pictures of the, of the rotted wood that needs to be replaced. And again, this was things that became apparent after the demolition activities. Next, please. This is a masonry plaster or support column on the interior of the building. You can see that large crack of the dislocated bricks. This was, and you can't quite see it in this picture, but that hole there is the, is a tree trunk that's pushing into the building. Again, this was behind, next slide, please. Behind this yellow wall, it just wasn't apparent at all at the time of bidding. And this needs to be, you know, fully taken down and then, and then replaced or rebuilt to, to support the building. Next, please. We found a lot of water infiltration in the building coming in. So, a piece of the gutters need to be fixed outside, but also there's an access panel or bulkhead that's going to be sealed off and removed. It's no longer needed. And then a piece of the sidewalk is going to need to be demolished and replaced to pitch the water away from the building. Next slide, please. And, and one more. Again, you can, you can kind of see where the crack is in the sidewalk there and how it's pitched towards, towards the building. Again, this is work that was not part of the contract drawings. So, these aren't, the contractors looking for more money. We're adding additional work to the scope. Next slide, please. Okay, next is the San Naples Senior Center. Next slide, please. This was predominantly exterior work. We're doing a concrete ramp, rebuilding stairs, painting the cedar shakes and including, adding a new door on the interior. Most, this work is mostly complete. They power washed the structure, replaced the deteriorated wood siding, paint, primed, painted, and done exterior repairs and fixed the ramp. And a new door in the interior has been completed. Next slide, please. Again, these are existing conditions or before the work had commenced, pictures of the facility. Next slide, please. Okay, you can see where the, on the top right is the concrete ramp that was being replaced. And just some other pictures of the concrete work that was pre-existing conditions. Next slide, please. So, for some reason, it was left out of the contract drawings. So, it was not part of it. I guess maybe they thought that they could work with the existing, but it didn't when they got into the work. That top landing, that concrete square needs to be replaced. You can see where the ramp and that meets, there's a small transition of the lighter colored concrete in the middle. We're not able to accommodate that. And for ADA compliance reasons, it was all removed and to be replaced. Again, this was not work that we previously purchased. So, that's why the contractor is entitled to a change order. The next page, please. Next slide. Again, just evidence of the damaged sheathing that was underneath the cedar shakes when they were removed. This wood needs to be replaced prior to completing the work. Next slide, please. When the contractor started doing some, you know, the sanding and power washing to prepare the surface for painting, the wood, it was rotten and just started falling apart pretty quickly. So, this is something that needs to be removed and replaced. Just pictures of the wood there. Next slide, please. And again, just more pictures of, of the initial condition that needs to be, needs to be abated and replaced. Again, when the contractor got into it, more damage than what had originally been known. And I think it's also important to note that this work was specified and the drawing's done almost two years ago. And if you recall, it was more recently that the CDBG funding was released, enabled us to proceed with the work. So, there inevitably had been some additional damage and deterioration to the build, all the buildings between the time the drawings were done up, initially scoped, and the work commenced. The next page, please. And the South Broad Senior Center. Next page, please. This is a roofing project, not a whole lot to it, no, no changes that I don't believe at this point. But the contract's been mobilized and commenced the roof repairs. So, that work has started. So, I want to include that, just that it has begun. That, that is it. Happy to answer any questions now or during the review of the, of the council items.
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Mr. Delisle. I think we can ask questions when the items come up.
Thank you, Council Vice President.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, you may move on. Mr. Collins? Yes, yes, Mr. Harrison.
Sorry. I wanted to ask Mr. Delisle, the, the things we had talked about, the flooring, the painting, some of the other things that are going to be considered, right?
So, 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 Mr. Harrison, we're going, we have those resolutions on the docket tonight. So, when they come up, we're going to ask the questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counsel, just to let you all know, we are adding a new staff member in the clerk's office. The minutes are going to be a priority. We are short two people, so they have fallen a little bit behind. I want to let you know it is well in my radar. Once the staff member joins us, we'll be able to free up some labor and get those caught up hopefully by July. So, that's, that's, I just wanted to let you all know that we are short on labor. It is on the radar. We will correct it. There will be twelve communications and petitions on the docket. There will be one report from the city clerk's office for April twenty one, April twenty twenty one funds collected in total of nine thousand, five hundred and twenty five dollars. There will be no ordinances for public hearing and for second reading. First on the docket tonight, there will be a resolution from the city clerk's office for Resolution twenty one dash one one eight, resolution approving a person-to-person, place-to-place transfer of coronary retail consumption license number one one, one one dash three three dash one eight four dash zero zero six.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, yes. Here's Mr. Rodriguez.
Roll call.
Roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
And if the council has any questions about that, I am prepared to answer any questions about that application.
You can move on, Mr. Collins.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have a resolution of the Department of Administration, Adam E. Cruz, Business Administrator, Business Administrator, Resolution twenty one dash one sixty one, a resolution authorizing the city of Trenton to accept the subgrant award of the federal fiscal year twenty twenty of Emergency Management Performance Grant and Emergency Management Agency Assistance.
Any questions? Consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolutions from the Department of Law, Wesley Bridges, acting director. First, we have Resolution twenty one dash one sixty two, a resolution authorizing the award of contract law office, Malley Givens, P.C., to provide professional legal services for the Trenton Ethics Board through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty four cap eight dash twenty point five exec and an amount not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars through OFP twenty twenty one dash zero seven.
Any questions? Consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty one dash one sixty three, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the contract of the law office of Michael A. Armstrong, Espoir, seventy nine Main Bridge Lane, Willingboro, New Jersey, oh eight four oh six, to provide continued professional legal services regarding legal representation in regards to general municipal and other legal matters in an amount not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars.
Any questions? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty one dash one sixty four, resolution authorizing an amendment to the contract of the law office, Vantinelli Cantor, P.C., three fifty four Eisenhower Parkway, Suite one thousand, Livingston, New Jersey, oh seven oh three nine, to provide continued professional legal services regarding legal representation in regards to general municipal and other legal matters in an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars.
Any questions? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty one dash one sixty five, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the contract of the law office of Iglesias Webster, Weichelsala and Taylor, LLC, six hundred Parsippany Road, Suite two oh four, Parsippany, New Jersey, oh seven oh five four, to provide continued professional legal services regarding legal representation in regards to general municipal and other legal matters in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Any questions? Consent.
Next, ma'am. We have Resolution twenty one dash one sixty six, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the contract of the law office of Weber Dowgla, LLC, three sixty five Riffel Camp Road, Woodland Park, New Jersey, oh seven four two four, to provide continued professional legal services regarding legal representation in regard to general municipal and other legal matters in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Any questions? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty one dash one sixty eight, a resolution authorizing contract extension to the law office of blah and blah, attorneys of law, to continue to provide professional legal services regarding negative tax appeals through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty four cap eight twenty point five exec for the city of Trenton's tax office.
Any questions? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution, Resolution from the Department of Police, Sheila Colley, Director. Resolution twenty one dash one seven zero, resolution authorizing contract to AT&T Mobility for the purchase of annual wireless services for air cards and cell phone services for various departments and divisions through New Jersey State Contract Number T two sixteen A eight two eight five four for a period of one year from February twelfth, twenty twenty one to February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Any questions? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolutions from the Department of Finance, Ron Zelinski, acting director. Resolution twenty one dash one seventy two, a resolution authorizing the cancellation of trust grant balances from all emergency shelter grant programs in an amount of one thousand, five hundred and fifty three dollars and thirty cents.
Any questions? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty one dash one seventy three, resolution authorizing the city Trenton to issue refunds totaling thirty three thousand, nine hundred and seventy two dollars and sixty nine cents on ten properties.
Any questions? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty one dash one seventy four, a resolution authorizing transfers to be made by the Director of Finance of the fiscal year twenty twenty one appropriations in an amount of five hundred and seventy two thousand, nine hundred and fifty seven dollars and one cent.
Any questions? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolutions to the Department of Health and Services, Dr. Lopez, Director. First, we have Resolution twenty one dash one seventy five, a resolution authorizing subgrant agreement with Monarch Housing and a shared services agreement with County Immersive to provide coordination activities, project monitoring, and evaluation, COC application preparation, developing a COC system and compliance activities.
Any questions on this one? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty one dash one seventy six, a resolution rejecting bids received for the furnishing and delivery of food, medication, and equipment for the animal shelter for revised specifications of the bid, twenty twenty dash seventy seven.
Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolutions, next, we have resolutions to the Department of Recreation, National Resources and Culture, Maria Richardson, Director. First, we have Resolution twenty one dash one eighty eight, a resolution authorizing application to acceptance of a five-star and urban waters brand to improve the property one hundred a Five-Star and Urban Waters Brand to Improve the Property 100 Edgewood Avenue.
Any questions? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-189, A Resolution Awarding Contract through a Fair and Open Process in accordance with NJASA 19:44-20.4 at SEC to Gilmore and Associates to Provide Professional Engineering for Design Development, Permitting, and Construction Document Preparation for the Rehabilitation of the Montgomery Street Plaza in Mill Hill for a period of one year from April 30, 2021 to April 29, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $21,360 through RFP 2020-55.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolutions from the Department of Public Works, Y. Von Teary, Director. First, we have Resolution 21-190, Resolution Authorizing Final Change Order Number One per NJDOT Regulations with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Reconstruction of Clinton Avenue Phase Two from Dyce Street to Liberty Street through bid 2018-87.
Any questions? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21, Resolutions to the Department of Water and Sewer, Mark Lavenberg, Director. First, we have Resolution 21-158, Resolution Awarding a Contract through a Fair and Open Process in accordance with NJASA 19:44-20.4 at SEC to Van, Doak, Harvey Associates, P.C., for the Development, Preparation, Printing, and Mailing Services for Consumer Confidence Reports, CCR Water Quality Report for a period of one year from May 1, 2021 to April 30, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $36,288 through RFP 2021-09.
Any questions on this one? Consent.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-177, Resolution Amending Resolution 20-671, Rescinding the Sale of Certain Property Authorized Thereby and Authorizing Return of a Deposit in an Amount of $20,500.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Well, I have questions about 177 to 180. They are the same, seeing these properties that went to the auction in January, and now we are returning monies back. You know, we're taking those properties and returning the monies. You know, that's incredible, you know? How could that happen? I thought that, I saw in the papers, like this big hoopla about how much money we made during that auction in January, and now we see that people are returning those properties. What is going on?
I believe we have quite a few of them, councilman.
Yeah, it's about four of them in this.
Mr. Cruz, would you like to address that? Or Mr. Delisle?
Yes, Mr. Delisle is available, Madam Vice President.
Okay. Mr. Delisle, would you like to address these deposits being returned?
Yes, Council Vice President, be happy to. Thank you for the opportunity to do so. I'll address them kind of in a group, if you will. Yes, Councilman Rodriguez pointed out that the auction resulted in over $4 million of auction sales or auction prices. Unfortunately, sometimes they don't close, and the actual proceeds is reduced. In a couple of instances here, people could cancel their contracts and have, you know, under consideration for the reasons, have put resolutions in to effectuate that. For one of these, 177, it was, we're recommending that it be returned because the property, having been vacant for so long, no longer has its variances in grandfathering, and the purchaser has requested to cancel it because he's looking for a commercial property, and he'd have to go through variances for it. We have kept back $2,000, so we are keeping a deposit and administrative fee. The reason why I'm suggesting to do this now is that the sooner we cancel the contract, the sooner we can make the property available to sale to somebody else. And if he's not a willing purchaser, it would be a fight, and we were looking at a potential litigation or a legal fight that would tie the property up for an indeterminate amount of time.
Can you hold in this first one? Because I like to know, I understood that when you went into the auction, you had the opportunity to go and see that property first and then do some type of research because you're taking your chances. So the zoning issue was, that person was not aware of the zoning issue, and the city was not aware of the zoning issue when that property was placed for auction?
You know, the, yes, you're right, councilman, that the person has the opportunity to investigate the property and look into it. We physically described the property as residential and commercial. That's the physical building. Again, because it had been vacant for so long, it reverts to the underlying zoning, which in this case was residential. You know, in this instance, there's commercial properties across the street. I think the zoning actually changes across the street. And again, because of the threat of litigation and the amount of money here involved, suggesting that we just turn it.
Who's going to be litigating? Who's going to be litigating? The city for.
The contract purchaser to sue to get their deposit money back.
Councilman, may I? Councilman Rodriguez, may I?
I don't understand, I don't understand this issue because I know exactly where I went to South Clinton East. I used to live a block away from there. And, you know, it looks like a business there. But what it says in the resolution is that the prospective owner, the guy that bought it, he don't want to go through the hazards of having to go through the zoning board. Do we have anything to do with that?
Councilman, I can't force him to go to the zoning board. And he, you know, indicated that he just did not want to proceed with the contract, and that's why we kept a $1,000 deposit and a $1,000 administrative fee.
Well, he should not get anything back. You know, it's his problem to go through a zoning. If he don't want to do that, what court is going to force the city to give that money back? That's a process he have to go through if he wants to have a business there. My point is, in all of this, is I saw the prices, what the people pay for that, the one on Riverside Avenue, $200,000, some thousand dollars, they pay probably four times of what those properties were worth, market value right now. Most of them dismissed, they were all overpriced somehow. And I knew that eventually we're going to see them reneging on those contracts because once they went in and checked it out and have an estimate of how much they had to spend to fix them, you know, I tell you, this encourages anybody because with the money that they paid for it, $225,000, they could have bought a building right there in South Clinton Avenue that is habitable, that is in good conditions, that had no zoning problems. Yes, those are the prices right there, you know? Those are inflated since, and I wonder who inflated those, where were those people from? I thought the majority was supposed to be for a homeownership, but not this one evidently, not the ones we are getting here. But that's what I can't understand, why we go through the process of a big hoopla about this auction and stuff, oh, we got so much money, when we have not received anything. Now we are giving that money back, and we are back in step one again, you know? And it's not new, it happened, it happened over and over. After these auctions, I guess people go in, they don't like the property, and say, okay, city, take it back. You know, that's how I see it.
Councilman.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yeah, my concern is, why are these properties not, why is there no research done in these properties before they go to an auction so that the people can be advised that the zoning has been changed?
Councilwoman, yeah, the zoning didn't change on this one per se, it's just that because it had been vacant for so long, any variances it had.
Well, I mean, they would have to go before the zoning board for variance use, and they should be told that when they're purchasing the property. I mean, you know, I can't hold this person at fault for the city's failure to give them, you know, the whole truth about this property, and someone should be checked, before these properties go on the auction list, there should be some research done on them to make sure that everybody has all the information on them.
Councilwoman, your point is very well taken on this particular property. Certainly, we learned from this, this is my first, you know, auction doing this, and this one just had peculiarities to it that we need to work on double-checking and certainly beeping up our disclosures or any disclaimers that the city may have. And again, on this one, you know, if the person isn't willing to complete the purchase, take the property, and get into some protracted back-and-forth, my recommendation is to, you know, have some penalty for them, we're keeping $2,000, and make the property available for sale, either at another auction or some other means.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure that.
Your point is very well taken, Councilwoman.
I mean, I'm not sure that this gentleman is in his best interest to invest money going into a lawsuit just to get $1,000 back. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Oh, no, Councilwoman, it would, we're returning $22,000.
Or you're returning all of that?
Yes, but we retained an administrative fee of $1,000 and his initial deposit of $1,000, so we're.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I mean, I just don't want this to fall on deaf ears. I think there have to be more information on these properties so that these people know exactly what they're buying and what their responsibility is going to be, so that we don't run into this situation again. And I talked to Mr. Cruz about this.
Yeah, and Councilwoman, you're right, the majority of properties that are residential, they fit neatly with the built structure and the zoning. In this particular one, you know, it's got a commercial property that is in a residential zone. It's just, it's a peculiar.
No, I understand all of that, Mr. Delisle. I understand all that. What I'm addressing is the city's failure to have all that information before the auction.
Yeah.
That's the city's failure and their responsibility.
Yeah, point well taken, Councilwoman.
Council President?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question. So under what, this is Councilman Blakely, are there, under what circumstances do we actually retain the deposit?
If the person just chooses not, you know, example, they don't get their financing, for example, they just decide that they don't want the property anymore. They're, you know, they're not able to provide any other extenuating circumstances that would give us any other consideration. You know, really, is up to, in some regard, it is up to the city's discretion and extenuating circumstances. And I think, Councilman, you'll find that we've found more of those with COVID now. There's two items here on the docket where the purchaser's mother passed away from COVID and his brother passed away from COVID. He's finding additional family burdens. He's a Trenton resident, and he asked to get out of the contract, he just financially can't move forward with them. And given, you know, the pandemic, and it's just such an unusual thing, you know, we're looking to release him from the contract.
It's important to note that these auctions actually occurred in the midst of COVID, of the pandemic, correct?
Yes, they did.
And so, I mean, the thing about it is, if the, if the deposit is meant to serve as, you know, a deposit to make sure that they close on the property, and then they don't close on the property, I mean, I just think that it may be in our interest to show people that if they make a deposit on one of these properties, then they are committed to it because there may have been someone who, you know, bid it for one of these particular properties, who would have actually retained the property, but they lost to someone who is now not going to take the property. And so, it seems to me that a, holding the deposit would serve as evidence that, you know, if you go into these auctions, you have to be 100% clear that you're purchasing the property, and, you know, that if you don't, you're risking your money. And so, it just strikes me that if we're allowing, and I'm very cognizant of people's personal deaths in their family, I totally understand that, but, you know, Trenton is getting the short end of the stick when we're holding property for months, and people are not able to actually get property because other people are holding it. And so, I think it's very clear to me that the deposit is not guaranteed to be returned. They understood that when they gave the deposit, and that it would not be returned. And I just think that this city has to have policies that encourage people to take these deposits very seriously and to take our auctions very seriously. Because what happens is, people are submitting these deposits, walking away, and the city is in the same situation that we were prior to actually accepting the bid. How many properties have actually been transferred from the particular auction? Can you give me a number on how many properties out of the total properties that were actually bid on at that last auction?
Yes, Councilman. We have about 10 properties that are set to close within the next two to three weeks. And another.
Out of how many bids? Out of how many, out of how many bids?
Well, there were 49 total, and another 19, 20 or so, we're waiting on title work to come back, that people have, you know, given us their 10% deposit and whatnot. So the balance, people didn't give us the deposit. And it is certainly an imperfect system. It is difficult. We are looking to retain other professionals to see if there's another way of doing this. You know, we did this online. You know, in the past, we did things in person, and we were able to, you know, don't let the people leave the room until you get their deposit, right? Online, it's been a different challenge, and we learned a lot from doing this first auction. And again, part of the reason to do this is because of the learning curve, but also to free up the properties for a future auction. And I would point out that the next item, 178.
Mr. Delisle, let's not go until.
Let me ask, I just want to say this for the record, I have a follow-up question. Because I want to be very clear, on December 11, 2020, there was an article in The Times of Trenton, which was titled, "Record-Breaking Property Auction Nets New Jersey City Over $4 Million." And let me just read, this was the kind of record Trenton Mayor Regus Yura wants to celebrate. The city's online auction for 50 city-owned properties Wednesday led to bids for 49 of them for $4.15 million. And so, just to be clear, 10 out of those 50 city-owned properties are actually, you know, projected to be closed. That's, I'm just asking a question. Hello?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I thought you were just reading the article.
No, no, I'm asking, I'm asking a question. You're saying that only 10 properties out of the 50 properties that were sold are actually being closed?
No, 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 no. Almost about 30 properties of the 49. 10 are set to close within the next two to three weeks, another 20, so we're waiting on their title work to come back. And unfortunately, you know, it's a process, we're waiting on the purchaser, they're either getting financing, and then we found just delays with getting title work back. And then we found just delays with, um, getting title work back with the courts and, and title searches, uh, due to COVID. Uh, that, that, that has been a challenge with things. So no, 30, 30 of the 49, which, um, is on par or better than, you know, experience with past auctions.
Uh, also, it says here last fall, the city auctioned off 76 properties. Can you tell me how many of those 76 properties have actually been closed?
I'm, I'm sorry, 76? There was 49 at the last auction.
No, I'm referring, so the fall of 2019, there was 76 properties auctioned off. And I'm just curious.
Uh, Councilman, I, I don't have that, that figure in front of me, but I, I can research that and get back to you.
That'll be great, that's all I have, thank you.
Uh, Council Vice President or President, whoever's on the line, it's Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yes, Councilwoman, yes.
Actually, I've been on for 20 minutes. So, Mr. Collin, can you record that, please?
So noted, ma'am.
Okay, um, I just, I'm just curious as to who in the law department reviewed this resolution? Mr. Um, this, uh, Mr. Delisle?
The, these resolutions were re- reviewed by, um, they were prepared by Sally Samuel and then, um, so Sally Samuel of the Law Department.
She reviewed all the, um, all the, uh, contracts or the, um, the, 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 uh, I guess the, uh, the pot, the, the, I, I guess the, the bids for the purpose of the purchase of these homes?
These, these resolutions that are on the docket, yes.
Yes, so Sally Samuel, I mean, so, um, so, uh, these are in essence of, you know, potential to, to buy, uh, contracts, uh, public property. So I'm just curious, again, uh, so Sally Samuel's reviewed all of those, uh, 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 submissions?
Ms. Samuel's is on the call.
Council Vice Pres- Council Vice President, although I will not be there on Thursday, I am participating today, um, Acting Law Director Bridges, if I may answer.
Yeah, please do.
Go ahead, Mr. Bridges.
I, 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 I did review them, I, I review them. As evidenced, I believe, by my signature in them.
No, your signature is on the resolution. I don't see the individual, individual contracts from the respective, I see a list of, um, the only thing that's attached to the resolution is the, the memo that in aggregate says that $30,000, $33,000 is going to be returned from, uh, to the business administrator from the tax collector. But I don't see, you know, the co- the actual contract given to each prospective buyer. Do you have those, Mr. Bridges?
I, I actually have reviewed those and I actually reviewed some similar ones today. Um, looked at the language in them, um, to, to get to your probably next question. Um, the contracts are very clear that they are as is, um, with respect to these purchases. Um, and it reflects the deposit, reflects the fees and reflects when payment will be due.
And what were the date of this, of these contracts, Mr. Bridges?
I, I don't have the specific contract in, in front of me right this moment, but I, I, I did look at the contracts as well as the other contracts that were drafted as part of the, um, uh, auction.
Um, since we're voting on this on Thursday, can you make sure, uh, uh, Mr. Collin gets those contracts and send them over?
I will do that.
Because, you know, I ask because again, my concern is that none, none of our, the city of Trenton does not have a, 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 a director of the law department. And these are the type of documents that need serious legal, um, uh, review and approval. And until we get a eligible, uh, law director rather in an acting role and/or a permanent role, I am, I'm, I'm afraid that any review by anybody in the law department is, is just not valid. I don't even see how you're signing off on anything, Mr. Bridges.
Usually with.
So, and, and that's, and that's my comment. So, but in the interim, Mr. Delisle, since you have been given advice and consent by the council, I need you to, um, Mr. Bridges has been never introduced to the council, never, there has been, uh, no resolution to appoint him as acting law director or permanent for that matter. So I don't understand how he is signing off on legal business of the city. So I need to see those contracts, okay? And that's all I have to say about that, thank you.
I'll make sure to provide it, Councilwoman, thank you.
Thank you.
President, uh, President Caldwell Wilson?
Yes, uh, Councilman.
Thank you. I just want to say for the record that I am not generally, um, I am not in favor of returning deposits. Um, I think that deposits are meant to ensure that people are serious about retaining, uh, these properties and that people have to go into these properties knowing, uh, that when they leave a deposit, that they are confirming their interests and that they, you know, are serious about this. If folks are walking into these, um, uh, 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 auctions and they're not serious and they're leaving deposits for properties that they are not going to, uh, take possession of, then it negates the whole reason for an auction. It makes it, uh, you know, that people can, uh, play the lottery with our properties and, you know, keep properties that may have been bidded on, uh, by folks who are serious about retaining these properties. And, you know, now we have to, you know, depend on people to, um, you know, their good faith as opposed to their deposit. And so if people felt they, they, that they did not have the resources, then they should not have placed a deposit on these properties. And so, uh, for that reason, uh, I, you know, until I see information that convinces me otherwise, I will not be voting on giving any deposits back because, um, you know, I just think that that's what a deposit is for. This is why you have an auction. And I don't think that people would be able to do the same thing in other communities. I don't think they'd be going to an auction in Princeton, put down the deposit, come back months later and say, hey, I'm not interested in the property and hey, by the way, give me my deposit back. I don't think so, thank you.
Councilman Blakely, would you like to roll call 177?
I would, yes, yes.
Yes, uh, roll call.
Yes, I would.
177, Mr. Congress.
Council, Council, uh, Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson, this is Sally Samuel. Can I just make one statement in regard to some of the comments that were made?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I, I would like to hear. I mean, I personally, I would like to hear so I can, I mean, I'd like getting as much information as I can to make my decision. I mean, she may have something that may change my mind or, you know, may give me something to consider.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Samuel.
Thank you so very much, Council, uh, Vice President, and thank you so much, Councilman Blakely, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Um, uh, just to, to, uh, I guess to address your concern, um, one of the, uh, resolutions, um, you will, if you would note, we are not returning the deposit in one of those resolutions. The sale is being canceled, but we are retaining the, the deposit. That's the Beatty Street Resolution. Um, so if you would note that that one in particular, we're not returning the deposit. With regard to the other three, um, resolutions, uh, which, uh, are, uh, properties that were auctioned at our December online auction, um, specifically two of them, as Director Delisle indicated, um, the, the purchaser or, or successful bidder in that case, um, is a Trenton resident, as, um, as, uh, the director indicated, is actually a city employee and, and did provide a good safe spot.
Ms. Samuel, Ms. Samuelson, Councilman Blakely, can we do these one at a time, please?
Oh, absolutely.
I would prefer to do them one at a time, Councilman, if you're all right with that. We, you know.
No, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. I'm totally fine with that. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Absolutely.
So as we go through them, you can, Ms. Samuel, as we go through them and there's questions, you can, I'll have you respond.
Okay, thank you so very much, Council Vice President.
You can, you can move on, Mr. Collin.
Yes, Mr. Chamber. Uh, next we have Resolution 21 dash 178, a resolution rescinding the sale of 811, 813, 815 and 817 Beatty Street to Emmanuel Malika and authorizing the retention of the deposit in the amount of $830.
Roll call, please.
Yes, yes, roll call.
Questions, ma'am?
We're getting the deposit back, Mr. San, Mr. Santiago.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
We're keeping the deposit in that particular one, Councilman.
Excuse me, can I, I, I'm speaking now. Uh, this, this wasn't from, from December of last year, this was from, uh, September 16, 2016. Uh, there was no closing there for five years. You know, this is a different case. This is, I tell you, what is going on? You know, and that, i- i- in a way, that was a giveaway, one, two, three, four lots for $8,300. And yes, we are keeping $830. That's all we are keeping. Uh, but are we buying those lots back from that? Because in five years, I was a real estate agent. Five years for a closing? Where is that? Where are we at? You know, that's not a real estate deal. What are we doing? You know, like, who's dealing with that? Who, who's handling that? Five years and there now, all of a sudden, he said, no, I don't want that, I don't want that last anymore. So, oh, keep the $830, keep it there. So what, you know, he don't lose much, $830, but.
I have a question.
Who was in charge of making sure the, uh, 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 finalizing that closing?
Would you like me to answer that?
Wait, 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 Ms. Samuel, hold on. Are you, are you finished, Mr. Santiago?
Uh, yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, so I, Councilman, I'll go to Ms. Samuel's to explain to Mr. Santiago and then I'll go to you. Ms. Samuel.
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you very much, Council Vice President. So, um, Councilwoman Santiago, just to answer your question, um, our, uh, uh, Housing and Economic Dev- uh, Development Department has a real estate division. And, um, let me just first say that this particular sale or auction precedes my employment with the city. Um, I only was, you know, uh, began my employment with the city in 2020. So I can't give you all the specifics as to, um, why it did not close in a timely manner. However, I was advised by one of the real estate division managers that part of the delay, uh, initially was because I think the lawyer that was representing the purchaser had misappropriated funds and there was a whole lot of ethical things going on. Um, the, the purchaser thought that, that she was, that she had closed or was closing and, and actually the lawyer had misappropriated her funds. So it, there was a lot of ethical things going on, on their end. Um, honestly, I have to say that, um, after that, they, uh, overcame that hurdle, that then it was probably some of on the city's delay, you know, um, you know, that the, the employees in the real estate division maybe failed to follow up in a timely manner. And, uh, now we're at the point where the purchaser can no longer, uh, because of, uh, COVID reasons they've indicated by the property. So we, we have, uh, determined that, uh, because the initial delays were the purchasers, um, and that, uh, um, uh, for the most part, the city was ready and willing to convey the property, we are going to retain the $830, um, but cancel the, uh, the sale so that we can sell the property to someone else. So technically, there was never, there was never a transfer of title, there was never a transfer of title.
It doesn't say anything about COVID in here and I personally don't feel comfortable, um, uh, giving someone, you know, dealing, dealing in this way because of COVID as a reason?
Well, that's not.
Since 2016, we didn't have COVID in 2016 or 2017 or, and so on.
Right, I, I understand that. What I'm saying is that last year, according to our real estate manager, there was a scheduling of a closing that was to happen sometime last year. That didn't happen because COVID and the fact that the city shut down and we went into an A/B schedule. This is what I'm just, I'm just delaying what I've been told. As I indicated, this particular auction precedes my employment. Um, and as I indicated, initially there were delays because there were delays with the purchaser's attorney not doing what the attorney was supposed to do. They misappropriated funding that was given to them in order to execute or commence, uh, this purchase. And so then the initial delays were because of purchaser's attorney and then there were other delays. So in this instance, since really, um, it was their reason or, 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 uh, their causes why the initial delays happened, we determined that we were not going to resent, uh, um, we were not going to give back the deposit, but that we would cancel the contract to still ask to make the property available for purchase by another bidder at a, at a subs- um, at another option.
So has then, has anyone looked at this property to see if it's been deteriorating since 2016?
Um, I don't have that information for you, Council Vice President, but I'm sure that we can provide that information to you on Thursday and the rest of the council members will be for Thursday and the rest of the council members to, uh, advise you of the, of the current condition of the property.
I mean, my concern is that Housing and Economic Development is becoming a human services agency, that we're, you know, that we're catering to all the needs of these buyers that don't follow through. I'm sorry, Councilman Blakely, go ahead.
Yeah, so I want to know what happens if we, you know, someone does not actually, um, follow through with their bid and we return it? You know, do we go to the second highest bidder or do we, you know, go, uh, out to auction, uh, again?
Thank you so much for that question, uh, Councilman Blakely. Actually, simultaneously, while we are presenting these resi- resolutions to Council to, um, cancel the contracts and to provide the return of the deposits, we have already gone out to the second and the third highest bidders, uh, um, asking them if they would like to purchase the property pursuant to the local, uh, land and buildings law, which allows us to do so. And so we are waiting for responses, but that's what we're looking to do. Now, if we don't get any positive feedback from the, uh, third, the second and the third highest bidders, then, then we will put it at, back out to auction.
Okay, uh, and so, you know, I just think it's important, uh, that as a rule, we keep these deposits so that, you know, we can make sure people understand, uh, that, you know, they are, you know, that they're putting some, um, you know, putting something into, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Looking for a, an idiom that I'm trying to.
That they have a best, that they have a vested interest.
Absolutely, that they have that, exactly.
And let me just, Councilman Blakely, like, for the most part, we do not give back, uh, deposits. For the most part, we, our, 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 um, you know, the, the, the position that we take is that we're going to keep the deposit. But in these two instances, um, and, and I know we're not on that particular, well, we're on Beatty Street, but when we move forward to the other resolutions, it was because of the extenuating circumstances and in particular, the, the one resolution where we did not provide, I guess, you know, clear information that the, that the purchaser would have to go before the, um, zoning board to get a variance. So, you know, where, where there was some, you know, I guess, fault in the city and, and, and the threat of litigation, you know, based on that fault, that's the reason why we've decided in this case to give, give back, to return the deposit. But we are retaining administrative costs because it, you know, we did take time, there was employee time that went into, you know, putting together the auction and working out the contracts and everything else. So, um, you know, where we could, we try to retain some sort of, uh, fees, um, in order to, uh, in, in order to compensate for the time that had been put in by, by the city. Um, but, but overall, our, our position is we're not returning deposits and, and, um, and, 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 uh, like I said, it's only because of these extenuating circumstances that we've decided to, in these, uh, few in- few instances.
That's all I have, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, as Council, uh, Council Caldwell Wilson?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Um, I just also, uh, along with the contracts that the law department will be forwarding me for each transaction here, for each contract or transaction here, um, uh, Ms. Samuel's Um, uh, Ms. Samuels mentioned that, you know, the buyer's attorneys. So, who is our real estate attorney that's representing the city during these auctions? When the, when the auctions are taking place, who, which attorney is representing the city? Mr. Delisle? Mr. Delisle? Director Delisle? When the auction is underway and taking place, who is the attorney that's representing the city? That's in attendance?
At, at this previous auction, the last one we held, Ms. Samuels was.
Is Ms. Samuels a real estate attorney?
Yes, I am.
So, you were hired in that capacity to represent our real estate interests of the city of Trenton? I thought you were envi, I thought you were environmental.
No, I'm not environmental, Councilwoman Vaughn. Uh, my, I have a master's degree in regional city, regional planning, and all of my experience working with municipalities have been in redevelopment and real estate. That's, that, that is my experience.
Okay, so you, so, so when you say, uh, all this predates your employment with the city of Trenton, but the fact of the matter is, once you become the attorney representing, i- 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 it's on your watch. You can't use the excuse that you weren't, it was not on your watch. You should have reviewed those, all those, um, transactions and issues up and, and to get up to date. But to come to the city council and says, and, and say to the city, the residents of the city of Trenton, who are paying you to represent us in this, in these transactions, you should know everything about those transactions and whether it happened on your watch or not. That's your legal and ethical duty as an attorney. So, uh, Mr. Bridges, uh, please take note of that. No attorney that's representing the city can sit here and say, and they're working on any business for this city, representing us, your residents and taxpayers can come and say, oh, that piece of it is not, wasn't on my watch, and I'm not responsible.
I, I, I appreciate your comment, and I don't think the, the statement was in right. I know the statement was not in reference to not being aware of it or educated about the fact that it's now here. But educated as to why it occurred in the first place is, 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 we, we weren't here for that. But we do appreciate every aspect of this. This was brought to my attention when we reviewed this document, which is why we went back and looked at the contract and familiarized ourselves with this. When it did not, while it didn't happen on our watch, we are absolutely aware of it and have done due diligence in that respect.
Yes, we have.
Therefore, authorizing the return of the balance of the deposit in amount nineteen thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay, Miss, um, yeah, I would like to say that I want this roll call. Because I just don't feel comfortable that, that because of COVID and an illness in family is reasonable enough excuse to have a deposit returned.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions on this? Can you move on, Mr. Conlon?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash one eight zero, a resolution authorizing, I'm sorry, a resolution, amending Resolution eighteen dash six sixty-five, rescinding the sale of certain property authorized thereby and authorizing the return of a deposit in the amount of eleven hundred dollars.
Any questions?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes, sir.
I have questions on this.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, that, he said, uh, something happened to a garage, and that's the reason the seller gave up the sale? What if they, uh, she bought those properties back in two thousand eighteen, November of two thousand eighteen? What, 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 what happened there? What?
Council Vice President, this is Director Delisle, may I respond?
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilman, the, um, between the time of the auction or subsequent to the auction, there was damage to the garage. It was vandalized, I believe a tree fell on it, and then the construction code official ordered it demolished. So, the condition of the property changed materially from the time of auction prior to closing. So, that is why we are, um, putting this resolution to cancel the, um, the sale because it was of no fault of the purchaser, the damage to the property. We never, we never consummated the sale, title never transferred.
That was three years ago. It took us three years to realize that we have to do. That's what I can't understand. It was three years ago, almost. It's going in three years now.
Yeah, it, it, the sale was from November of eighteen.
Yeah, November twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen, the auction. And then, eh, my question. Eh, after the auction, after the person signs the contract, you know, whatever, agrees to buy the property, we still responsible for those properties? The city still responsible? If it's vandalism or?
If we still have title to this thing, yes.
So, that, that, eh, eh, it says vandalism, but i- i- if a tree falls on top of the garage, that's, you know, that's, that's not vandalism. That's something that happens everywhere at any time. Or let somebody push the tree or dug a hole and, and push the tree down or something. Where's the vandalism at?
Oh, there was, there was additional vandalism to the garage. There was, there was a couple of things that happened. But, um, again, Councilman, because this was of no fault of the purchaser.
When was the damage done to the garage if they purchased it in two thousand and eighteen? When was the damage done to the garage?
They, 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 we never completed the sale, so they, they, they never owned the property.
Well, they, eh, I have a question. Yeah, but when was the damage done to the garage?
In, in early.
Where the garage came from? It said lots, lots seven and eight, three fourteen and three sixteen was handled with lots. Doesn't say that there was a house there or garage or anything? And then, in the bottom, it talks about a garage. Where was that garage? In which one of those lots? What, what did, did the garage have to do with the sale of those three lots?
They, the, there was, the garage was on the property. These, these were not vacant lots, and the damage happened in, um, in early of nineteen.
Uh, Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, is Councilman Rodriguez, are you finished? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm finished.
Um, I, I, I concur with Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson and, um, Councilman Rodriguez. I don't understand this one either. Again, I'm gonna hold the Law Department, Ms. Sally Samuels, um, accountable for, uh, letting this transaction sit dormant. And then, and then, um, and then we decide to give the money back to the, to the, uh, the potential buyer. Uh, and I thought, when you buy something at auction for city property, is that, is it, is as is? Right, and as is, is as, what it means, right? Is, Ms. Ms. Samuels, is that correct?
Can you repeat your question, Councilwoman Vaughn? Would you, would you repeat your question?
When a purchaser, when a purchaser buys city, from city, on city property, buys city property, isn't it as is?
Well, it, 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 the sale is pursuant to the terms and conditions of, if it's an auction, of the auction, um, terms and conditions, uh, document, or pursuant to the contract, if it's a sale that we are doing either, um, pursuant to the, uh, housing and redevelopment law. So, it all depends. Um, but, yeah, if, if we include the as-is language, as-is usually means as-is. Um, but as-is doesn't mean that if there was a house and a garage, and now there's no longer a garage, that we can force the purchaser to buy it. But that's, that's, as-is means that what it was at the time that we sold the property, and I think what's been indicated is that at the time that we auctioned the property in two thousand and eighteen and the time that the contract was executed till now, uh, the garage was destroyed. Uh, so now, the property is not really in the same, um, it's not in, you know, it's not the same property that it was, you know, when, when we sold it.
So, I mean, I'm just, I'm not understanding how these three years, I don't understand the duration, how these transactions have sat dormant in the, I guess, in the tax, I, I don't know, in the tax success, in the tax collector's office, indoor to Department of Economic Development. I don't understand how they, eh, eh, but, but when a bidder puts a, expresses an interest in a property and, and, and puts, and, and purchases it, um, isn't there time, isn't there a timeframe that the closing has to occur?
Yes, there is a timeframe. And honestly, um, Councilwoman Vaughn, um, I, I, I will say that, um, both Director Delisle and I have been frustrated by the entire process. As I indicated before, there is a Real Estate Division that once we have an auction, they're supposed to basically process, um, you know, and move forward with the contract. They're supposed to ensure that title is, um, is bought, is received. Um, you know, that if there are any issues, those are resolved, um, and that we close in a timely manner. Um, you know, these questions were asked of the Real Estate Division as to, you know, why the significant delay? And, um, honestly, you know, the responses, you know, um, were not really that, um, um, you know, I, I can't really say that they were, that they were really that, uh, you know, that, that, that I, that they were really.
That they're really close, that, that, that they were really close.
That they were really that good, but during the time, during that timeframe, now we've lost a part of the property. And so, now, the, the property is now significantly kind of changed from what it was. It was a house and a garage, and now it's just a garage, and now it's just a house, I'm sorry. Um, and so, right.
So, yeah, so I understand all that. Again, my question is really, eh, eh, trying to adjust the core of the issue here, right? The core of the issue is that, um, the, eh, the process at City Hall and our departments amongst our management, we're not doing the business of the city. We're like in violation of the law. We're not, we're not, we're not following processes. We're not following, um, procedures. We're not following city codes. We're not following ordinances. I mean, how are we running this city, Ms. Samuels? You're one of our legal advisors. So, um, and, and, and by the way, it would be good if you can cite some of these provisions of the law here in this resolution, because I don't see anything. This, this resolution is not even, it, it, it's not even embedded in law. So, I want to know what the redevelopment law and the real estate law, uh, that exist on the book.
Councilwoman, we have to, we have to address the, the, um, the ordinance.
Well, that's why I'm asking, I'm asking, I, I'm asking for the, uh, the, um, the, for the Resolution twenty-one, one eight zero to, eh, I want Ms. Samuels to insert the real estate law that allows for us to give back, um, uh, rescind the sale of a property after three years. I want to see that law that allows us to do that. Because I don't think this is legal or proper. Um, so, Ms. Samuels, can you give us that law and insert this in, in the twenty-one, in Resolution twenty-one, one eight oh, that, that allows us to, um, uh, resolute what you're proposing here?
Okay? If I may, if, if I may, um, Councilwoman Vaughn, um, Council Vice, Council Vice President, can I respond?
Yes, go ahead.
Just briefly make a quick comment? All right, so there's no law. What we're working off of by, by, um, canceling the contract and providing the deposit is the contract, the terms of the contract of sale. There's no law. What, what the law, the law that authorized us to do the auction, that was, that was the local land and buildings law. So, that's separate and apart from now, from what we're talking about now. So, the auction is over, we entered into a contract of sale, and now, based on the terms of the contract of sale, we are now, uh, asking the council to approve a resolution to cancel the contract because the provisions of the contract have language that says there are certain, you know, there are certain, uh, that, that you can cancel the contract based on certain reasons.
Well, I'll set that flag in again. Again, I'm gonna make myself clear again.
Councilwoman, let her finish.
Well, no, 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 because she's not answering my question, Council Vice President. So, I'm just gonna end it so we can get some time here. Um, I don't care about, um, the reasoning, you know, you know, what can be done and what we, what you're trying to do. I understand what you're trying to do. But I think what you're trying to do is not proper. Because, I'm gonna tell you this. You're asking this council, and you're asking me to give you approval and permission to give my taxpayer dollars back to a buyer of public property. So, no, I'm not willing to give taxpayer dollars back willy-nilly based on just because we can and just because we want to. You need to come here with some facts, and you need to come here with the law. So, I want to know what law permits us to give taxpayer dollars back after a transaction has been, eh, uh, executed, okay? And that's all I have to say. Please get me that information. I don't care which attorney, you have to, uh, engage to get it.
Okay, no.
Okay, no, 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 no. I want an attorney, rather we have it on the retain list, or rather, it comes from you, Ms. Samuels, or it comes from, I don't know. Uh, uh, I don't even want to say Mr. Bridges, because Mr. Bridges, right now.
Why not?
The, the, the legal representative of the city. So, I need, I need this, these resolutions to be embedded in law before I approve giving taxpayer dollars back to anybody in, in a, in a contract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You can move on, Mr. Conlon.
Yes. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-one, a resolution amending Resolution twenty dash six seventy-one, rescinding the sale of certain property authorized thereby and authorizing the return of the balance of the deposit in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay, I want to roll call this one. This is another COVID excuse. And I'm sorry, we're going to open up the floodgates because when people find out we're returning deposits due to COVID emergencies, um, all these properties are going to be turned in. So, I'm going to roll call this.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Some floors would like me to move on, ma'am.
Give them this, Audrey.
Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash one eighty-three, a resolution to enter into a multi-party agreement with the County Mercer and the DNR Greenway Land Trust, Inc., for the continued operation, remediation, and development of an urban farm on city-owned property located at three oh one North Glen Avenue.
Any questions?
No, I got to roll call this. Uh, Mr. Delisle?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Okay, authorized, revised, will take. So, um, who is, uh, I'm looking at a resolution that was passed, uh, from a prior council um, in two thousand fourteen. So, so this multi-party agreement with the County of Mercer. And so, are these all public entities?
The, for the, for the new agreement?
Well, the new agreement is based on the agreement in two thousand fourteen, right?
Correct. And one of, one of the parties from the original agreement, City, uh, City Works is no longer in existence, and the DNR Greenway Land Trust is, is looking to get out of the agreement. Um, a lot of their work is done. So, it, this would be now, uh, an agreement between this, mainly between the city and the county. And, and I believe there, there may be representatives from the county online if you wish for them to just give a brief overview or discussion or.
Mr. Delisle, when we have comments on the resolution, someone can speak and I'll call them.
Thank, thank you, Council Vice President, and I apologize.
Yeah, um, I, I would like this roll call, and if, and Council President, I mean, Council Vice President, um, if the representative from the county would like to, um, speak, I think, I don't know, um, we could, that, that you can have him speak on Thursday?
No, what can, I can have.
They can do it today.
Councilwoman, they can do it today when we have comments on the document.
Okay, okay, very good.
All right. All right.
But I would like this roll call.
Okay. You can move on, Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-184, a resolution accepting a bid in a working contract to Yanusi Group, Inc., for demolition of various structures and neighborhood redevelopment and revitalization program for a period of one year from May 15, 2021 to May 14, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $229,000 through bid 2020-11. Floor is open.
Uh, I would like to, uh.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Roll call this, please. Um, so, uh, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Delisle, um, so the structures that are being demolished, um, it's, and it's 229, 29, which, um, which funding are you accessing to do this work?
The, the Neighborhood Redevelopment and Revitalization Program, the, the money from, um, from, from the state.
So, when, I, I see it here, uh, you know, with the approval, it says a Neighborhood Rehabilitation, Rehabilitation Pilot Program, HSMA, a demo fund. Is that the 11 million point, is that part of 11.5 million?
Yes, it's the same one.
Okay, so what is the balance of that, uh, money to date?
Oh, Councilwoman, I don't, I don't have the report in front of me. Um, it's certainly plenty of money to come.
Can you have it on Friday, on Thursday, before Thursday?
Oh, certainly. Yeah, I thought I had sent that previously, but I'll be happy to send it again.
Well, no, no, well, it, it should have been, it should, I, in my opinion, it should have been attached here. At, anytime you, um, uh, reduce access to that fund, um, 2020, uh, uh, 229 this time around, um, I know you have done some demolition and used that funding in the past, so it would be nice to see the running total in what's left of it.
Sure.
Okay? So let's talk about that on, on, on Thursday, uh, but you, you, you wouldn't know off the top of your head, uh, the, the current balance minus the 229 here.
Um, not, not off the top of my head, Councilwoman, and I hate to mistake, but.
All right, so that's fair, that's fair. So if you can get that by Wednesday, you know, Wednesday, close the business, that'd be great.
Yeah, but certainly, Councilwoman, there is a certification of funds here, there's plenty of, there's funds available for this contract.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I, I understand the funds are available. What I'm asking is, uh, of the 11.5 million that was granted to the city, uh, for, for the specific purposes, purposes of addressing these, um, these, these risky, uh, vacant, um, you know, uh, unlivable, you know, houses, um, uh, you know, and we said that these houses would cost about $25,000 each to do, um, at the time when Governor, the former Governor Chris Christie granted the funds to Trenton. Um, I, I just want to know where we are to date with that funding and how many houses we have already, uh, 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 demolished and, and paid for out of that fund.
Sure, happy to provide, Councilwoman.
Because as you know, costs have, have continued to, you know, increase, you know, um, with, uh, cost of living inflation, so everything goes up, right, over time? So, um, so $25,000, you know, 10 years ago, um, doesn't buy you the same, you know, in 2021, right?
Sure, and Councilman, you, you may recall, uh, excuse me, Council Vice President, if I may, um, the program was amended, um, last spring, and the dollar amount was raised to 35,000 per property, 25 was the initial.
Yeah, 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 I do recall, mhm. So, um, so let's see where we are with the, with the, with the, with the funding.
Okay, Mr. Collin, you can move on.
No, ma'am, I can't.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-185, a resolution authorizing a change order to the contract with CHS Construction Corp. for bid 2020-45 renovation of the Sam Naples Center at 611 Chestnut Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. Floor is open.
Any questions?
Council Vice President?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, Mr. Delisle, when we took a tour there of the Naples Center, uh, we were talking about the new flooring, the, uh, painting of the walls, and the chairs, remember they were all low to the ground, placing them?
Uh, not with, with any of these, um, actions, Councilman, that's something we, we would look to do for a future, um, uh, a bid or a second phase. But that, but we absolutely took note of all that, and we'll be working on preparing that.
Right, that, that's a concern about the, uh, the one after that at the Reading Center, and the same thing at the Clinton Recreational Center, the, uh, flooring and the painting. We're doing all this work there to, uh, do this for the seniors and for the children. Um, we should do painting, and we should do the flooring, too. Thank you.
Thank you. There any more questions on this? Okay, consent?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-186, a resolution authorizing change order three to the contract with Levy Construction Company, Inc., for bid 2020-49 renovation of the Reading Senior Center, Senior Recreation Center, 15 Ringgold Street, Trenton, New Jersey.
Any questions? Consent?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-187.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was just reading, what, with the Reading Senior Center?
Yes. Which one are you talking about?
An amount of $651,600, uh, we would need to roll call that one.
What, the 186?
The, um, the Reading, the, uh, the, yeah, 21-186.
Roll call for that one, Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am. Just to note, uh, the change order is for $12,000, $12,579.22, which is to 673,000.
Yeah, well, what, my question is, is going to be, again, uh, we discussed this before, uh, here we are, a construction company comes in, they take a bid for $651,600, which is a very lucrative contract, in my, in my opinion, right? So, um, and then, somewhere along the line, they need, um, uh, 12 more thousand dollars? The total amount of the change order is 8,922. Previous change orders have been authorized in an amount of 12,000. The total amount of all change orders to date is $21,000. My God! So the total, now the total contract is now increased to 673,000. So all I'm saying is, again, um, I know that some other of my council members, I believe it was Council President and, and, uh, Councilman Rodriguez, we know, talked about this ad nauseam, that, you know, contractors come in, they, they know what the job is, they had, they assessed the job, and then they come back and try to milk us for more money. That's my opinion, I said it, that's right, fleece in the city for more money. So I want to know why they keep changing stuff? What's happening over at the rec center that they didn't know at the initial, that they didn't find or assess and, and provided an estimated cost for, um, that they didn't, that, that, you know, they didn't see, uh, initially? And now they're saying that, you know, um, they need more money? So, um, this is just, to me, just, uh, you know, um, a money grab, appears to be money grab, you know, um, scold creep and, and changing every, you know, every, you know, few months, just to get a few more dollars. So, yeah, I want this, uh, um, roll called, and who, um, um, well, Mr. Delisle, if you want to speak to this, um, what's going on over there? That they need 12, they need eight.
Councilwoman, were you, were you here for Mr. Delisle's presentation? He made a presentation in the beginning.
Well, no, I was not, because I joined late.
I will email to the presentation, ma'am.
Very good. Okay, so, but, just roll call this, and I'll get a chance to look at the presentation, um, but nonetheless, it doesn't, you know, again, we, I mean, I, you know, the economic, the Department of Economic Development, um, you know, to me, this department has some major issues, but nonetheless, send me the presentation, and please roll call this.
Okay, all right.
Council Vice President, did you want me to add any clarity or?
Can, can you, is there any way that you can do this presentation with Mr. Vaughn, Ms. Vaughn, can you send it to her? I mean, we're holding up this meeting.
I've emailed it to her already, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, would you like me to proceed down the.
Move forward.
Yes, next we have, and the last resolution on the docket tonight, uh, except for the executive session, which we'll hear tonight, is Resolution 21-187, a resolution authorizing change order seven to the contract with Sisari Builders, Inc., in 2020-47 renovation of the North Clinton Recreation Center, 454 North Clinton Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey.
Councilwoman, would you like to roll call that?
Yes, yes, I would like to roll call this, because it's the same old contractor with the same old, um, uh.
What's that noise?
Somebody's drumming.
I'm sorry?
It's nothing, ma'am.
No, okay, I, because I was speaking. So, um, it, my concern is that, that we have the same contractors who've been doing business with the city for years, the same construction companies. Why are, why are somebody, why is somebody speaking?
Someone has to mute themselves.
I've taken care of it, ma'am.
Okay, so we use the same contracting companies, they're very familiar, the same architect, the same architect firms, the same, um, design firms, and they come with, they know the process, and they come and nickel and dime us. They know who they are, and I'm going through the contracts, the same old ones. So, I, I, you know, ju- just please, uh, let's put this on, uh, roll call, and, you know, it's just outrageous. How folks think they can just come and fleece Trenton, and think that this council's going to approve all, all this money for them. So, so I am going to, uh, that's all I have to say about that, and just please roll call this one, Mr. Collin.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You can move forward, Mr. Collin.
Sure, ma'am.
Council Vice President?
Yes?
Uh, Mr. Delisle?
Mr. Delisle? No, no, we're, we're going to move forward.
No, I was going to ask Mr. Delisle that he offered a tour of these three facilities. That's why we would see what the, uh, change orders are about.
Yeah, they're, they're, Councilman, they're, they've sent the, his presentation to Ms. Vaughn. Mr. Mr. Collin sent it over to him, she needs to look at it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, Council Vice President?
Mr. Delisle, we're going to move forward.
I, I, I understand, I just believe an item may have been passed over, I just wanted to point that out.
Which item, sir?
Uh, 182, but again, I, I may have missed it, I just wanted to be sure.
182 is not on the docket, I believe it was pulled by the administration at docket review. I'll send that to you in an email later, sir.
Thank you, I wasn't aware of that, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, next is, or, next, madam, we have the introduction, first reading of an ordinance, which will have to be roll called, because we are a fourth community, and it's an ordinance, uh, is resol, is ordinance 21-11, capital ordinance providing for the rehabilitation of West State Street between Prospect Street, Parkside Avenue, buying in the city of Trenton and the County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,211,841 to pay for the cost there.
Uh.
Which amount will be, which amount will be funded by a New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund grant, received or expected to be received by city from the state of New Jersey Department of Transportation?
Any questions?
Uh, yeah, um, I do, uh, is Maria Richardson on the line?
For what?
Is Maria Richardson on the line?
Ms. Richardson?
Excuse me, excuse me, Councilwoman, if this is about this West State, it's for Wally.
100 Edgewood Avenue, this is not about you.
This is not.
Maria Richardson signed the resolution.
This is not Edgewood Avenue.
This is the ordinance, ma'am.
What is it?
Ordinance 21-181.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not 21-188?
No.
No, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. So what, what is, oh, this is for the, uh, this is for West State Street?
No, Parkside, Prospect.
Yes, yes, I have a question, I have a question regarding this, Mr. Um, uh, Mr. Collin and Vice President Caldwell Wilson.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman.
So, uh, Mr. Onatary, I'm glad that you're on the line, um, so, uh, of course, many of the residents have, uh, articulated that, that we're not understanding for the amount of money, I know Councilman Rodriguez also initially stated the same, is why is it that we can't afford to use that money to go all the way up to Sullivan Way? Is there, is there a chance to do that?
Uh, not, not with the money we have right now. We are doing this in phases with the request we have, we did put in for the whole to Sullivan Way from the state, but they only gave us up to that point. And then subsequently, we're going to get another money to finish it up to Sullivan Way.
Okay, so the other thing is, you know, we're concerned in the West Ward that we get our streets paid, West State Street, um, Park, I mean, Stivison Avenue, Parkside Avenue, and then with the lead service line replacement, right? They're going around the city, digging up the whole Spinello, and, um, what are you doing to, uh, about getting a quality assurance supervisor out there to make sure, you know, the Spinellos of the world, and, um, you know, don't come in and tear up our streets? And, because they were working down here on Parkside Avenue, the water department, I saw them, uh, thi- this week, tearing it up, and, and they don't even, uh, uh, re-meet, replace it as they, you know, you know, as they found it. So you put in last year for a quality assurance manager, and a road, uh, what do you call it, a road inspector, and you still haven't hired them? So what's going on? So I don't understand how you're doing all this work in the city, putting down brand-new roads and pavement, and then it's only going to be torn up, and then you don't even have an inspector to make sure these contractors are, um, are properly installing the materials and, uh, fixing the road and remediating after they tear it up?
Council Vice President, may I?
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman, yes, uh, what I, what I have inspectors that are working with the contractors to see the road that are being tore up, and they intend to fix this road back when it's done. For PSC and G, we are working with them with our engineers, and they are doing all those roads from June, like I said, last time when I had a conversation, that we'd be working on all these roads, and that is one of the reason why we haven't really started working.
Somebody is still talking!
That is one of the reason why we haven't started working on Stivison, because we are giving them the heads up for them to finish up the lead and PSC and G working on those roads, because we are ready to start working on Stivison Avenue, but we're giving them the opportunity to go ahead, so we are working together to make sure we don't have all this tear up. And sometimes, there's going to be situation where they will have to come back, but they have the understanding that they will come back and repave that whole road to the, the way it is.
So who is the road inspector? Who is it, Mr. Onatary, in the city of Trenton? Because you put up an ordinance a couple weeks back, and, and it was a redundant, a duplicate ordinance that council approved back in October for you to hire this inspector, so you hired one, and who is it?
We're still, yes, we have somebody, but we are working on getting the approval, you know, to be done, to have him completely in place. We have a guy from Streets Yard, who's already working on the streets, who's going to be taking the position, but we haven't put him in place right now. So the engineer and the, uh, traffic, you know, supervisor are both working on the streets. Pending the time, we have somebody there permanently.
Okay, but the council gave you approval to hire that person last year. Why haven't you hired them?
We're still going through the process to hire them, remember we have that problem we had that I brought before you, but you rejected it, and I realize.
No, 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 because, no, no, but we still have that other.
Okay, I think we need to stick to the ordinance.
It is, this is, this is the ordinance. I want to know about how is he going to make sure that street does not, we don't waste our money, uh, Caldwell Wilson, to, uh, put, pave the new street, and he doesn't have the resource in place to provide the oversight? and he doesn't have the resource in place to provide the oversight to make sure it's done properly and to make sure that in the event that there is, uh, a need to dig it up, that that entity, the contractor, Water Works, PSC and G, or whomever, is gonna fix that street. Now, you know, I'm concerned about my streets in the West Ward. I don't know whether you're concerned about the ones in the North Ward, but I wanna make sure that the Public Works Department has the resources in place to pave these streets out here in the West Ward and to keep them nicely paved. Now, it doesn't seem like he has those resources in place. We already approved for Mister Onatieri, a, 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 a resource last October for a road inspector, and he still has not hired him. And I just wanna know why. And how's he gonna provide oversight over those roads and that work and that money if he doesn't have a road inspector? So he can talk around it and slick talk all he wants to, because he still hasn't hired that road inspector. Have you, Mister Onatieri?
Uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, I'm not trying to sweep talk my way out of it.
Well, my question is, did you hire a road inspector?
Excuse me, please no back and forth.
So did you hire a road inspector, sir?
No, we are in the, we did have somebody, but the paperwork has to be done completely before we put him in position. We already did interview for them, actually twice, for different people, and then we have somebody selected, but we haven't put him in place.
So why is it taking so long? Work is underway. Why is it taking so long to put him in place? What is the problem? Because maybe the council or the mayor or somebody can help you. What is, what is it that we need to do to get this individual in place? The council already gave approval for it, for that person. Sir?
Councilwoman, you are off-topic right now. We need to stick to this ordinance.
I'm not off-topic. Mi- ca- mi- how are, how am I off-topic? If he's paving the street, so I need to know if there's gonna be an inspector to, to oversee that work, Caldwell Wilson. I mean, how is that off-topic? That is not off-topic. That is totally relevant.
The inspector's not in this ordinance.
No, but the inspector is needed to ensure that money is not wasted, and that paving job is done properly.
That we're dealing with.
Well, that is the ordinance, to pave Parkside Avenue. So he doesn't have the resource to provide the oversight to make sure that job is done correctly. Every pavement job over a multi-million dollars, Caldwell Wilson, needs an inspector, a road inspector. What is it that you don't understand about that?
Please refer to the chair as the chair. Thank you.
Okay, Chairman Caldwell Wilson, so my question and my concern is relevant. It appears that Mister Onatieri does not have the answer, and that's not my problem. But Mister Onatieri, by Thursday, come to the council, uh, and tell us, when are you gonna hire that road inspector before you get here in the West Ward and start paving that street? We want a road inspector to make sure that job is done properly and well, and with quality. Mister Onatieri?
Yes, I'm here, Councilwoman Vaughn. Uh, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Please let me know.
Inspection right now, just because we don't have specific road inspector. We have the engineers out there every day checking on these jobs, and then the water also have road inspector on their side, even though they don't call them that, that monitor the contractors to make sure they are doing the right thing. So we do have, you know, oversight on all these people out there. We do, just because we don't have a specific...
And I don't wanna take up any more time on this, but please come to me on Thursday about who this person is that you've been trying to get and it's taken so long. Because here in the West Ward, we had a problem, Mister Onatieri, if you remember, when we paved Morningside Drive, and the water runoff was not done properly, and you had to come out and do it again.
Councilwoman, you're off-topic again.
So if you do the job right the first time, you don't have to worry about, if you had a road inspector, that would not have happened. We don't want the same type of, you know, you know, mistake or, um, you know, shouting work to happen again. So we need that road inspector, and I need to understand why you have not been able to hire this person and why it's taken so long. Okay, thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you. You can move forward, Mister Conlon.
Uh, the next item on the docket, Madam, do you wanna do, uh, public comments on the docket items?
Yes.
Or would you like to go to exec first?
Yeah, do the, uh, public comments.
Uh, but it's an administrative meeting, so we wanna keep it moving forward. Does anybody wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council docket items owner?
I believe Mister Watson is.
Uh, Mister Aaron Watson, Madam.
Go ahead, Mister Watson.
Good evening, uh, Vice Chair. Uh, look, first, I wanna thank you for allowing me to say a few words, uh, and I also want to thank the council for entertaining just a few comments about this important arrangement that we have with the city. On behalf of the Park County Park Commission, I'd like just to talk about the proposed management agreement for Capital City Farm. As you may know, the idea of creating a farm dislocation was conceived approximately a decade ago, and the property was acquired in two thousand and fourteen by the city of Trenton, utilizing open space funds provided by Mercer County. Today, the Capital City Farm is entering its fifth growing season, largely to the efforts of a, a group of very dedicated volunteers, not the least of which is the Agrihood Project, uh, and DNR Greenway was involved, also the Tass Soup Kitchen. We just can't say enough for the folks that have dedicated their time. Feels, though successful on many fronts, the farm's potential to feed the community and serve as a community hub and training center is still in progress. The overall hope for the future of the site is to help community members develop job skills, with the hope that the food reduction and the programs of the site can be largely led by members of the community. Initially, the plan was to establish a nonprofit organization to assume ownership and management of the farm, but fundraising and other challenges have required local volunteers to reassess how best to proceed. After discussions with local volunteers, the Park Commission realized it would be a win-win to dedicate our staffing resources to the farm, as it would provide a Trenton-based location for us to offer public programs on farming and environmental education, as we currently do at Howl Living History Farm and other park locations. You know, we're, Howl, Howl, Howl Living History Farm in particular, we get upwards of sixty-five thousand visitors a year, and a lot of them are from Trenton, but we'd really like to have a footprint here in the city. So under the terms of the management agreement, the Park Commission is offering to assume management responsibility for Capital City Farm. The city would remain the ownership of the property, while the Park Commission would assume all of the costs, staffing and other responsibilities for day-to-day management of the farm. The agreement will renew annually unless and until the city or county determines that it's no longer wanted to, to proceed with the partnership. A partnership between the Park Commission, the city of Trenton, and the local volunteers and community groups is a recipe for success on many levels, and we look forward to helping the Capital City Farm reach its highest potential should you approve this moving forward. Uh, Vice President, I know this is in your, uh, in your ward. I spoke to you briefly about this, and I just wanna thank you, you considering this fitting and appropriate to address this body. I think this is a wonderful program, and we're excited about its future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Watson. And I, I do, I do thank you all for coming, coming up to the plate, stepping up to the plate and helping us with this farm, because the community benefits from those vegetables. They can garden. They, you know, I mean, and the soup kitchen gets fresh vegetables every day for their meals. So I wanna thank you, because it really did need some help.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions from my colleagues?
Yes, I have a question. Um, good evening, Mister Watson. Um, I had asked for this, uh, uh, resolution to be roll called because they informed me that one of the, what's it, city, I forget the name of the nonprofit that was originally involved in the partnership. They are, of course, that nonprofit is no longer in existence. So is that the reason, uh, is that the only reason? Why wasn't that, uh, entity replaced? Or is there some reason why we were not able to, um, engage another replacement, um, partner?
You know, uh, Councilwoman, this is a very good question, and I understand, you know, while this has been uh, sort of in the works for a number of years, it's been difficult to get people to really dedicate significant resources to helping out, whether they not be nonprofit or otherwise. And look, I, you know, we're not trying to be opportunistic here. We're trying to do whatever we can to try to re- bring creative programming to the city of Trenton, and we look at it as a win-win. We do this, and we do this well at Howl Farm. We have the expertise to do this. I doubt any, there isn't any nonprofit that can compare with the resources that we bring to the table. So, you know, I just think that this could really benefit everybody and really make this, this parcel shine, certainly for your residents, and certainly for the residents of Mercer County.
Yes, well, we're a part of Mercer County too. So all I wanna say is that, um, so I'm glad that there, this is a joint partnership exclusively now between the city and the county, correct? So the DNR, um, trust is also, uh, uh, vacating the project, right?
That is correct, Councilwoman.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Councilwoman, do you still want to roll call this?
Uh, no.
Mister Conlon, remember that from the roll call.
Yes, ma'am, and let me just go through so I don't forget, uh...
That reminds me, where's my walk-on? Council Vice President, where's my walk-on?
I just actually texted her. You asked for your walk-on, uh, and so the procedure, but we'll finish with Mister Watson first, and then we'll move to...
Okay, very good.
Mister Watson, were you done with your presentation, sir? You have ten minutes, and you still have one.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, does anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council's public portion? If you're on a phone, you can dial star six to unmute yourself and speak up, because I can't see your hand raised. Uh, Council Vice President, we have a, uh, Council Chair, we have Ms. Sherry Garrett.
Yes, Ms. Garrett. Thank you. Um, a few, uh, questions and, um, input. Um, uh, to, to address, um, uh, the Mister Watson, Aaron Watson. Um, that was, what number was that, uh, uh, Mister Conlon?
It was one-eighty-three.
One-eighty-three. So, okay, so I, I understand the humanitarian aspect of it. So where's the, where, I don't know, it just seems like there's still not, uh, uh, some transparency in, uh, for the county and the parks, uh, area, um, because they're gonna take up all the expenses. Does Mercer County have these? I mean, I know based on tax dollars, uh, you're gonna utilize that to maintain, um, I guess, these vegetable gardens, but are people purchasing these vegetables? Or are people, are, or, or these, uh, these produce will be given away free? I, I just really, the whole, uh, uh, arrangement of how it, you know, uh, the involvement on the resident side and the county side and how this is gonna, you know, be, you know, you're saying that the county's gonna maintain it totally, but how do we, how does this work? Like, it, it, the, the details are not, I didn't get this detail on that. I, I don't think it was clearly...
Ms. Garrett, this is comments only, but I will ask Mister Watson to address me with the answer.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, for twenty...
Let, let him address me first with the answer to that.
Okay.
Uh, through the chair. Ms. Garrett, thank you so much for your comments. And let me tell you, I don't, uh, I'm sorry that you don't think that this is being completely transparent, and maybe I just didn't wanna have a full-blown presentation here that probably could have provided a little more detail and thus you a little more comfort. Let me tell you, the county is, is completely altruistic in what we're trying to do. We're trying to bring creative programming here, but we're more importantly trying to train, train people within that neighborhood how to become farmers, how to, you know, how to take pride in that area that once, that area that was once pretty desolate, right? So whatever crops that are being produced there will be shared with the community and to help out Tass. You heard the Vice President speak to, uh, some of the fresh vegetables that are produced for Tass. Well, Tass never even had a, a, a salad bar before that, that farm got there. So not only, not only are we gonna be training people, we've also found the appropriate talent to come into the space. We've just hired a young man who is an African-American farmer, because just to be one, you have to see one, that's gonna be able to come in there and help, uh, create some, some educational programming there. So we're very excited about coming in there, and we're very excited about what we're gonna turn out of there.
Thank you, Mister Watson.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Garrett, you can continue with your comments.
Thank you. Okay, so twenty-one one-seventy, uh, uh, Director Holy. Uh, I, I'm not understanding why, uh, the police department needs air cars and cell phones, but that's not here and there, but what, what gets my goat is that I've seen on numerous occasions where police, uh, tra- uh, police officers are, are, um, in their vehicle, uh, 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 police cars, and they're holding their cellphone and they're driving. And I'm saying to myself, uh, isn't that illegal to be sitting having a phone conversation with your cellphone in your hand? And you on the job. So, you know, I'm concerned about that, and I'm, and I thought that's why we paying for the radio equipment. You know, we just updated the, we have this new facility that, uh, will allow the police officers, uh, and the, um, uh, and everyone in the department to have some type of, uh, better system to, you know, to communicate and address issues within the city. So I, I'm not really sure why that's, we are, we're, we're, we're purchasing or paying for air cars and cell phones, and, and that has to be addressed with officers driving in their vehicle on the job and speaking on the phone in motion, and not even caring. Um, resolution, uh, resolution twenty, twenty-one one-seventy-five, I, I wasn't sure if they, not now, but you could address the chair about monarch housing. I really didn't understand how that played into, um, uh, this shared, uh, uh, COC system. I, I, I just didn't understand, because that wasn't clear, but I, I, I relooked at the resolution. Um, in regards to twenty-one seven-seven and to twenty-one one-eighty-one, uh, in regards to property, I did go out and I looked at those properties. I didn't look at all of them, uh, but I looked at the maj- majority of them. I think the only ones I didn't, um, 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 uh, view the site was on Jersey Street. I, I didn't get an opportunity to do that. Um, my only input about a lot of those houses, again, um, I, I say this without sound like I'm insulting, but a lot of these houses, homes, these properties, uh, commercial and residential have been sitting on the city tax roll for years, for years. And some of those properties that, uh, that, uh, were put for this last sale, I, I would, I viewed them. Some of them was falling. A roof was, at the front of the building was leaning over into the street. The roofs were caved in. Some of the properties, they, they, I guess, that, that, the, the, the initial, uh, owner must have walked off, because the family that lived there, uh, I don't know how long ago, because it looked like the place is vacant for years, um, left their stuff. So I, I wasn't really sure. I know, um, I've read the, uh, policy in regards to the, the sale, and it, uh, it did state that, uh, you have to have clear, make sure that you have clear title. You have to hire someone prior to the sale. You know, you gotta do your due diligence prior to the sale. But my point I'm saying is, even though the city under, uh, Mayor Eric Jackson, he did hire a, uh, a realtor, uh, who specialized in real estate, it's that, that, that role to me is not really being utilized to benefit the city. It has to be more involvement, and I think, you know, I know this, uh, government is not into commercial, but I think it, it, I think the city, based on so many vacant and abandoned properties, may want to get a unit that come in and kinda get these houses back up on the, the tax roll by doing certain things, um, far as dealing with the structure and the cleanup, because a lot of these houses are, are used, these vacant properties have been, like I stated, vacant for years, are being, are, are left there in their dumps. Meaning people are dumping their waste, their mattresses, their tires on these properties. And inside of the, these houses, you can tell they've been closed for so many years, because the dust is so thick. The wet, it's just a mess. So I just think that, you know, a lot of these people, they get into it because they think they're buying a, 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 a house very cheap, that they could put a little bit of their money into it, but when they get into it, and I think they finally get, I pay for someone to come in and give them a, a cost estimate of what it will cost, uh, to get that house where it's livable, I think it's more than what they can afford to do. And yeah, you know, we are giving back money to some of these people, but a lot of these people really can't afford market-rate houses. So I think we gotta do a little bit better in our relationship, and like I said before, these houses should not be sitting on the city tax roll for years, and they shouldn't be given to investors, out-of, out-of-town investors, where, again, people are not having an opportunity to buy them of their own. So we're gonna have to figure out something. Now, that's a, either we, we, we created a, a unit for that, or we get a unit that actually comes in and rehab these homes, like Habitat and Humity. I don't know if that's still in existence, but something has to be done, because we have too many vacant houses, and we need more houses on the, on the, on the tax roll. Um, in regards to the senior centers, um, from twenty-one one-eighty-five... and we need more houses on the, on the, on the tax roll. Um, in regards to the senior city centers, um, from twenty-one, one eighty-five to one eighty-seven, okay, uh, yeah, I, my question was, who actually initially did the inspection? You know, some of that stuff, the buildings have been around for a long time, and it should've been anticipated there would have to be some structure, um, uh, some, uh, some serious infrastructure, um, uh, repairs. So, there should've been a contingency, uh, money set aside for like, issues like this in that proposal. So, uh, we would, we, we, the, the contract is not coming back for twelve thousand, thirteen thousand. Money should've been put aside for something like that, because I, I don't understand why that, that came a surprise. And last, at least, I'm gonna wrap it up real quick. Did not see, uh, communication with the county, uh, with this twenty-one, eleven, uh, West State Street, uh, again, real quick, I did mention this last council meeting with Mercer County. Uh, they are planning on this, a lot of money going to this roads, these roads in Trenton. So, we're gonna have to figure out, because it seems like it's double-dipping and waste of money being spent. Sorry about that. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Next man, we have Darren Frieden Green.
Go ahead, Mr. Green.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can, thank you.
Good evening, uh, Council, Council Vice President, uh, Council members, just two quick points. I think a lot of what we do in the city, we miss out a lot of times because we're so caught up on conspiracy theories. We miss out on some of the simple things that we could take, take ownership of and work with the county. I think we've never built a robust relationship with them. Uh, Director Watson is doing some really great work with the parks out there, and city residents, in particular, black and brown, do not know about those parks, do not get access to those parks. A lot of times it's a transportation issue, but I just think they just don't simply know about it. Uh, again, one of Trenton's icons, Ms. Betty Lacy, who was a ment- a mentor of mine, her daughter does an amazing job disseminating information. I certainly will share with all the council members in their emails, but Mercer County Parks and the city need to build a much better relationship in terms of the transformation of information and allow city residents to understand how, uh, the, the plethora of programs that are out there in terms of horses, uh, they have rowing programs, they have a number of things that inner-city kids really never have access to in terms of hiking and things of that nature, where the exposure would be good for them and the experience would help them too.
Mr. Green, you have to speak on the docket.
Uh, that's what I was talking about, the presentation he made. Uh, so I was just simply saying, we need to do a better job at giving the information out in regards to the county and the parks and the things that they're doing out there, and I think the presentation was on point, and I think we should use our platform to disseminate that information so city residents can benefit from it. Thank you.
Yes, does anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council? Do I have a motion to close public portion?
So, Ms.
I have motion by Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, public portion is closed. Council Vice Chair, I have a request from a council member to walk on a resolution for consideration. She would like to, uh, raise a motion to allow her to walk on the resolution. Would you like me to read the resolution to the record first?
Yes.
Okay, let me put it up, let me put it up on the screen. Bear with me for one second. Uh, I do wanna note for the record, even though I did sign this as to factual content, it was as presented. I did not prepare this resolution.
Well, is, is Mr. Bridges on the line?
Well, ma'am, I'm gonna read the resolution to the record first.
Well, no, 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 since you state that, I want the law department to state that they signed off a form and legality.
He did, and I'm gonna put it up on the screen, ma'am.
Okay, so I don't understand what, what your issue is by stating that, Mr. Collin.
Ma'am, it is, i- 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 it is, I did, I just wanna let know that the reason why it's signed as presented is because I did not, I did not...
Well, you have time enough to do it, which I have an issue with. Anyway...
Uh, ma'am, I'm not gonna get into a debate here, I'm gonna read this into the record, so, thank you. Okay, this is, this resolution does not yet have...
You should do your job, Mr. Collin.
I am doing my job, ma'am.
Vice President Caldwell Wilson, see, first of all, the resolution should've been on the docket, because Councilwoman Robin, woman, don't talk over me, Council, Vice President Caldwell Wilson.
It's, she's the chairman, and she talks... Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Collin.
Go ahead.
This is resol- this resolution does not yet have a number, this is a resolution removing Harry Reyes as Commissioner from the City of Trenton Parking Authority, whereas the city, whereas the Council of the City of Trenton appointed Harry Reyes as a Commissioner for the City of Trenton Housing Authority, and whereas pursuant to NJSA forty colon eleven cap A dash five, Commissioners may be removed for inefficiency of duty or misconduct in office upon receipt of the charges at least ten days prior to the hearing thereon and had an opportunity be heard, and whereas the Trenton Parking Authority advertised a request for qualifications on November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, for an Executive Director, and whereas on November ninth, twentieth, two thousand nineteen, an empty notice K E J Associates was created upon information of belief to answer the RFQ advised by the Trenton Parking Authority, and whereas on January twenty-third, twenty twenty, Commissioner Harry Reyes cast a vote to approve a contract between the Trenton Parking Authority and K E J Associates, that contract indicated that Trenton Parking Authority Commissioner Perry Shaw the third would be employed by K E J Associates, as K E J Associates representative is salaried a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year, and whereas Mr. Shaw began his employment with K E J Associates on February first, twenty twenty, after resigning from Trenton Parking Authority on January third, twenty twenty, Mr. Shaw assumed the leadership position of K E J Associates, which had been chosen to serve as an Executive Director at the Trenton Parking Authority, and whereas Commissioner Reyes knew or should've known that Mr. Shaw's duty as a Commissioner, including keeping the cost of the DPA contract low and that his duty conflicted with his personal interests as newly hired employee to K E J Associates, the presentat- this presented a substantial conflict in the proper discharge of their duties and the public interest, and whereas Commissioner Reyes was provided a requisite ten-day notice pursuant to NJSA forty colon eleven cap A dash five, now therefore be resolved by the City Council, the City of Trenton, County, Maryland, New Jersey, Commissioner Harry Reyes, being as here of our removed as Commissioner of the City of Trenton Parking Authority. I have a motion, uh, by Ms. Vaughn to allow this for a walk-on on Thursday. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Ms. Rodriguez, I will call the roll. A second by Mr. Rodriguez, I'll call the roll to allow the walk-on. Let me just get my coding sheet. Mr. Blakely. Mr. Blakely, this is to allow the walk-on for addition to Thursday. I don't believe Mr. Blakely is with us anymore, I'll come back to him. Uh, Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Harrison votes no. Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Michelle votes no. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez votes yes. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, she's muted.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn votes yes. Mr. Blakely, are you still with us, sir? Mr. Blakely is not with us, so I'm gonna mark Mr. Blakely as being absent. Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Caldwell Wilson, your vote, ma'am?
No.
Resolution fails, it will not be walked on. Madam, would you like me to proceed, would you like to go to public com- or civic comment, or would you like to go to executive session?
Um, executive session.
Can I ask, excuse me, I, I'm just a nobody, I'm a public citizen.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, the, the, the time for public portion has closed, but you'd be...
Well, I wasn't given an opportunity to say anything.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm gonna have to mute her. Ma'am, I'm ju- uh, even though I had to mute you, I'm just gonna let you know, the time for public portion for the docket items is closed, but on Thursday, there will be another relevant public portion for that meeting. We'd be happy to have you to speak on any item for ten minutes at that time. Thank you. Uh, do I, uh, this is Resolution twenty-one dash one nine-three. This is authorized to the City Council, the City of Trenton, to hold an executive session, which excludes the public. Be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Trenton, this body will convene an executive session in the City Council Conference Room, or in this case, Microsoft Teams, that it will be limited to consideration of an item or items with respect to which the public may be excluded pursuant to Section seven B of the Open Public Meetings Act through NJSA ten colon four dash twelve. General nature of the subject, the subject to be discussed, attorney-client privilege, litigation, Bailey versus City of Trenton, OAL docket, Office of Administrative Law docket number C S V, three-six-one-two-oh-one-nine-S. Stated as precisely as possible, the following is the time and circumstances under which the discussion conducted at said meeting can be disclosed to the public, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, when the need for confidentiality no longer exists, whichever is later. The public is excluded from said meeting and further notices dispensed with all in accordance with Sections eight and four-eight of the Open Public Meetings Act. Do I have a motion for executive session?
So, Ms. Garrett?
I have motion by Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison, and I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely? Mr. Blakely is absent. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison votes yes. Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Michelle votes yes. Ms. Ro- Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez votes yes. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn votes yes. Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
We are adjourned to executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, there will be a civic comment section after the executive session. I'm gonna ask IT to put up the sign, uh, noting that council is in executive session. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Clow, um, would you, uh, send me the link to the executive session since I'm covering for Acting Director, um, Bridges?
I believe I sent it earlier. I, I will send it. I did, but I will send it to you.
Thank you so very much.
Uh, for the rest of you...
Thank you so very much.
Uh, for the rest of you, we will see you when we return from executive session. I don't anticipate it'll be that long. There will be a sign up indicating that we have adjourned to executive session. We greatly appreciate your patience. When we return, we'll resume the meeting for civic comment. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be back shortly. We're just waiting on one more member, ma'am, and we'll have a quorum back.
Who we waiting for?
Uh, I need either Mr. Michelle or Mr. Harrison to return.
Mr. Michelle is on, I think.
I see Mr. Michelle in, yep, so I see him, so we have a quorum. Would you like me to call the roll, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely, are you absent, sir? Do you see, are you here, sir? Blakely is absent. Mr. Harrison? Mr. Michelle? I see you're here. Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Vaughn?
I'm here.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Present.
Now, for the record, Ms. McBride, this, uh, Mr. uh, Blakely are absent, I expect Mr. Harrison to return to us shortly, uh, but he is presently absent from the meeting. Uh, we do have a quorum, would you like me to call the records again? Would you like to proceed to civic comment?
Proceed to civic comments.
Uh, ma'am, who would you like to call first?
Um, Mr. Harrison?
Uh, Mr. Harrison is not yet returned back to the meeting.
Mr. Michelle?
No comment.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No comment tonight.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, I have lots of comments. Um, uh, I'm very really concerned about our city, and a lot, I've been getting a lot of emails and communication from our constituents, uh, a lot here in the West Ward, but also all over the city, that, uh, folks are concerned about a lack of leadership, um, at, at, at the mayor level, as well as within this council. Um, clearly, we are failing the city. You can look at the docket and tell that we're failing the city alone, even here on, on the council with certain leaders. Um, I would like to start with, um, the Water Department. Is, is Mr. Mark Lavenberg on the line? Is Mr. Mark Lavenberg on the line?
Mr. Lavenberg?
If Mr. Lavenberg is not on the line, is, is the Business Administrator on the line?
Uh, yes, Council Vice President, I am here.
Okay, so, um, excuse me, why, why is it the Water Director not on the line?
He was just on up until like, two, three minutes. Uh, he may need to be, uh, um, I'll just let him know that the, that we're back on a meeting.
Yeah, please, because, um, Mr. Cruz, you can hear this as well, and, and maybe, uh, I really need to respond from you and Mr. Lavenberg. I have gotten some serious communication from city workers that work at the Water Department and some constituents regarding, uh, uh, employees and leadership over at the department, particularly with, uh, uh, potential, uh, alleged, uh, timesheet fraud and overtime fraud. Um, we have employees, I have records, folks have, uh, 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 shared records that there are city employees that are making seventy thousand dollars a year in, uh, in overtime. Okay, they are posting, uh, overtime and double time on Saturdays and Sundays, and of course, as you know, Mr. Cruz, I have brought this to the mayor and your attention regarding, uh, the, the, the health inspectors, um, uh, some other employees that are doing the same, booking double and triple time on Sundays and holidays. Uh, uh, and some of these folks are making more in overtime than they're making their, their salaries. Now, I don't know what these city workers are doing, but I don't think there's any employee that, uh, can work, uh, double the standard professional work week of, um, forty hours. So, when folks are posting, uh, eighty hours and et cetera, et cetera, there should be some concern. So, um, there are issues with management over there, uh, Mr. Lavenberg and, uh, Ms. Epstein and some others who are in a leadership role are signing off on these overtime sheets. Mr. Cruz, are you aware of the exorbitant amount of overtime that's being booked? Why are city workers coming on Saturdays and Sundays and holidays booking double and triple time? Mr. Cruz?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilwoman, that is actually, um, it, they are direct reports to the Director of Water, and if he feels that there is a need for individuals to come on on Saturdays and Sundays, I cannot negate that, that request.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not saying that whether there's a need, I'm saying that the numbers are to a point where they're raising red flags, Mr. Cruz.
Yes, we can definitely take a look at that, Councilwoman.
You have to explain to me indoor, if, if there's other council members that are interested, and perhaps even authorities, law enforcement, the prosecutor's office, the Attorney General's office. How, how is it that folks, because timesheet fraud and overtime, and, and, uh, overtime fraud are crimes? So, there are some instances where, uh, health inspectors were booking triple overtime on Thanksgiving weekend, pre, pre-COVID, okay, so, restaurants were closed in the city. So, what were they doing on Thanksgiving? Um, there, there's no way they could've worked overtime on Sundays and Saturdays when restaurants were closed in the city. What were they expecting? So, these are the type of red flags that I'm talking about, and these are the red flags that citizens are talking about. And these are, uh, uh, concerns that folks are saying that, look, we're about to launch a class action lawsuit against the city. So, Mr. Cruz, I'm sure you are aware of the chatter, and the chatter is not good. And I would advise you, being the Business Administrator of the city, that you need to get ahead of this and get on this and take it seriously. So, if you're not taking it seriously, and then you'll, and, and, and if you're planning on being reactive about it, then I gotta say, then I'm gonna have some serious concern with your leadership. And I would, I would have some serious, uh, I would be challenged to even, want to even keep you in that role. Because if you're not taking these, uh, communications seriously, when folks are booking seventy grand a year overtime, then I have serious concerns about your role as the Business Administrator of the city. So, um, and any supervisor over at the water plant that's signing off on such a thing, they should be fired. They should be fired. So, I am, so, if, if you don't get busy investigating this, Mr. Cruz, is Mr. Lavenberg back on the line?
I am, yes, Councilwoman, but, but I would ask that if, if, uh, since you have been provided documentation, if you can provide it... been provided documentation, if you can provide it to me as well, Councilwoman, because the people that are speaking to you definitely do not speak to me, so it would be appreciated if you can forward me that information.
Right, and you know I have forwarded you such documentation in the past, so I am serious about this, Mr. Cruz, a- and Mr. Lavenburg, but I am surprised that you, you gentlemen have not bought this to the mayor's attention or anyone else's attention, the law department or otherwise. Okay, because if citizens is bringing this type of information to the council, that means that you have all, you have access to, to admin system and, 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 and timesheets, I mean, these numbers are outrageously high. And any half decent manager with half a brain will say, oh, my goodness, this does not look proper. This can't be right. And a lot of this overtime and triple overtime have been happening before COVID. And during COVID, stuff was shut down, so I don't understand how that, that they've been, how can you justify this type of overtime? Folks were working from home. So this is a serious investigation that has to go on here. And I just want to say, very disappointed in my council representatives who refused, but I'm glad they did, it's on the record, and they will follow them through if ever they want to get reelected in this city, that they are complicit in the corruption that exists in this city. We have, uh, uh, a situation over at the Trenton Parking Authority, I had raised the resolution, and I have, uh, have been working on, uh, uh, researching the possibility of dissolving the Trenton Parking Authority, and there are certain individuals that have acted unethically, and I, uh, and our council, certain council members decide not to show up tonight, which they do often, don't show up, leave the meeting, you know, but they're supposed to be president and vice president of council, um, uh, and don't act when there's, uh, clearly, uh, 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 activity, uh, that, that, that's, that potentially, uh, that's criminal, indoor, uh, certainly speaks to corruption. When you talk about bid rigging, when you're talking about giving your friends and associates contracts without going around, without going, uh, without, uh, uh, engaging the appropriate processes, the fair and open process, but yet council leadership is complicit in that process. And they can sit here and say, oh, we're waiting for the ethics complaint to come back, well, since when does council, uh, make decisions based on any ethics review or investigation? That's inappropriate, totally inappropriate. The Ethics Board is an autonomous organization, whatever their findings are, is their findings, the, the council does not act on the findings of the Ethics Board. The Ethics Board doesn't even report to the council. So all of that is just an excuse not to act, or, or proves that they are complicit in the corruption over at the Trenton Parking Authority. And one of our council members is a liaison, been on the Council, Trenton Parking Authority for years. And, and, and wait a minute now, my, my time clock says I still have time.
So, we don't have a quorum anymore.
We don't have a quorum anymore, ma'am. When you started attacking the council, two members left, so.
So we have no quorum, we have to end this meeting.
We actually must adjourn by law, so I, I apologize, ladies and gentlemen.
No, 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 no problem, very well, good night.
Technically, we are adjourned at eighteen P M. Uh, we will see you back here on Thursday, thank you very much for your time. Uh, I do want to put two things out there for the people that are, uh, remaining, uh, this year's election will not be delayed, it will occur, the primary will occur on June eighth. Going forward, spread it around to your friends, additionally, all forty-four polling districts will be open, uh, for the primary on June eighth. If you have any questions, uh, please reach out to me, uh, and I will be happy to ask any, a- answer any election questions you have. In addition, I just want to make one important announcement, people, there will not be mail-in ballots mailed out to everyone like the last couple of elections for COVID. So if you traditionally received a mail-in ballot, you will continue to receive a mail-in ballot, if you did not traditionally receive a mail-in ballot, you will not receive a mail-in ballot this year. I'll be making announcements at all meetings upcoming, uh, until the election, and we are putting together an election website for the city website, I hope to have that up in the next week or so, uh, and we thank you very much for coming tonight. Uh, the next meeting will be on Thursday at six P M. The link and the docket items can be found at E code three sixty, if you would like to be added to the docket agenda distribution list, please contact me at clerk@trentonnj.org, we'll be happy to add you to that list. If you just want a copy of the agenda and the items, email me, I'll be happy to drop a copy out to you by email as well. So once again, the election will not be delayed this year, uh, it will go forward on June eighth for the primary, uh, primary mail ballot, mail-in ballots, uh, are not being mailed to everybody, only those who traditionally receive them, if you would like to receive a mail-in ballot, please contact, uh, the county clerk's office, um, and you can receive a mail-in ballot in person, I believe, up to the, including the day of the election, uh, and there, there is a drop box out behind, uh, the clerk's office, uh, right there at the clerk's office entrance for any mail-in ballots you wish to drop off, that box is picked up every day, uh, by the county clerk's office, uh, so for the election information, if you want to have any other questions for election information, uh, please contact me at clerk@trentonnj.org, or just call us at the clerk's office, we are adjourned, so if you're waiting.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night.